I now call to order the planning commission regular session of September 6th, 2016. Go call. Thought votes here?
Graham here.
Drew here. McCoy here.
Scott here.
Cass here.
All present and accounted for. May we all stand for calling in silence and collect the lead? Plushy leaders. To the fight of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, an indivisible, liberating, existentialist. This is ridiculous.
Yes. I'll spare you. Someone just died.
Oh, okay. Agenda. Do we have any changes to the agenda format? Do I have motion to accept the agenda as written?
So.
On favor?
Second.
Any votes? Let's carry. Minutes, sir?
One, I have one.
Go ahead.
Under consent agenda?
Mm-hmm.
Should that be Bill Graham to approve amendment July 18th? Not June 7th?
Dennis is looking at Libby.
I'm trying to find what is it.
Is my memory?
Second day.
Yes, you're right. Sorry.
It's all right.
Okay. Do I have a motion to accept?
Wait a minute.
Quick, quick, quick.
And the regular minutes.
I see.
The bottom page two and then this page three, the part dealing with the amendment to Article 3, Section 3.15b. That paragraph amidst a discussion pertaining to litter in the area due to the vendors, that sort of thing, there was nothing, any aspect of that that was included in here. So it's a size amount, point by point, but if you listen to the recording, I'm sure it will all be in there. So just, and then the other item, the other item is that says the commissioners agree that vendors of beach would be a great service and all that. Well, they didn't agree. I mean, I think there was a sense, we've discussed it before, but that you can't conclude from that that we're ready to vote or anything.
Well, we gave direction to littering back in.
Yes. You gotta keep. It was alone with us.
Exactly. Right, right.
Says that they would be a great service to the inland beach goers to walk and stuff like that. Didn't say that we agreed. Go ahead. It was text.
How about if I say if you reached a consensus?
Pardon?
How about if I change the language that the commissioners reached a consensus that it would be a good life.
There was general agreement, you know.
To move forward.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's fine.
Oh, that's good.
Yeah.
I mean, if we were to move forward because there's discussions on.
What? How many? And what? What, exactly, absolutely. Just the what was a bit concerned.
Yeah. Yeah, includes, you know, the brawl supporting hot dogs and stuff. But so, you know, we've got to see, we've got to work on it some more.
Okay. Any other?
That's all I have.
Okay. Did you say there was an entire section missing? Or entire?
No, that doesn't have to do with litter. There were several points made, you know, I don't.
No, no. Okay.
But it's all had to do with litter and the fact that we'll talk about it.
Okay. Do I have a motion to accept the minutes as amendment?
I made the motion to accept the votes.
Second.
On favor?
I don't know.
On opposed? So carry. Reports.
I'm going to add this one to the state report. If it entertain any questions.
Yeah. I have one. What's all this additional content right before the reports in this month's agenda? All the pretty pictures.
Presentations.
That's part of the minutes. It's going to see attached, and that's the C attached.
That's fair. No, I understand. Okay. It's fine.
Where have you had the accessory? That's how we pass it up.
We run off the council and it is also a part of the comprehensive plan, for the comprehensive plan supports. Accessory rolling units with limitations put in the context of more out of action is still a design ordinance continued to deny. Right. Accessory rolling units.
Hasn't come up since I've been up there. I never sent it up. Oh, man.
Well, it's holding with the compliment too.
Well, we've got a joint planning and town council meeting coming up, so that's probably, that's a good time to talk about that. All business. Set a date for the comprehensive plan, drive public care and town council. November 22nd and November 1st, November 1st has been recommended. Anybody have an issue with that? Do I have a vote to vote?
That's not, election may be involved.
Yeah. That's the problem, I mean.
I have a motion to accept November 1st as the recommended date to meet the town council. On favor? On my second, sir.
I'll stay.
On favor? Any votes? November 1st of this. Now I got mail back, I'll actually see it.
Yes.
All business B, revised proposed draft text amendment Article 3, Section 3.15.b, limited access commercial activities in the space district.
First thing I'd like to say is the attachment is not the vendor agreement, it's actually the policies.
Ah.
Now, the vendor agreement, which is also on the website, institutionalizes much of those policies. So I just wanted to amend that and I'm happy to add that to the amended minutes for this meeting after this meeting. So if you got it by way of attachment, it's actually policies, not the agreement. Followed from the meeting on the 15th, I did have a chance to talk with the executive director at the museum about how the farmers market addresses some of these issues narrowly out there. Also, food Charles should be capitalized in that second paragraph. Habits for the benefit of the audience, all we, what those are. An onsite manager was present for market day. The number of vendors in particular categories of goods is limited to ensure diversity at the market. The onsite manager assures that each vendor is providing only the type of good for which the vendor received approval. All vendors hold appropriate insurance. All vendors are required to participate in a specific number of market days, they're going to need that. Participation rates result in loss of vendor privilege in space. All vendors are required to set up a breakdown during specific time periods before and after the market activities. There is limited onsite consumption resulting in limited accumulation and discarding of garbage. Vendors of consumable goods are more successful than vendors of crafts and collectibles. There are a number of prohibited activities, including smoking, walking, and promoting political activities. And lastly, all vendors sign a final agreement. The revised text reads as follows. Town recognizes the seasonal nature of this district. Certain limited refreshment and beach-related commercial activities compatible with permanent use of this people below. Commercial activity shall be restricted to May 1st through September 15th between the hours of noon 6pm. Commercial activity is restricted to the area east, so they landward at the toll of the noon to the boardwalk, south to the pavilion to the fishing pier. Individual vendor sites shall not exceed 100 square feet. No commercial activity will be conducted from motor vehicles and all commercial activities shall exclude the use of external generators and electronic amplification signage will not be affixed, but may be flayed or bannered to a maximum of six square feet area. All vendors are required to provide by the conditions of their business license and clearly reduce or may result in the loss of vending privileges.
Now, the six square feet of area, is that the entire flag?
That is, as we know, is the calculation of all the verbiage and image boxes on a signed front.
So you've got what, five is 20 by 20?
I'm afraid not.
Hi. The 100 square feet, we're only allowed an eight by eight canopy. Most of the ones down here have 12 by 12.
Or 10 by 10.
Or 10 by 10.
Most of them 10 by 10. Those are, most of them are shoulders 10 by 10, that particular.
Okay. So I'm sorry, 10 by 10. Okay, so, I don't know.
My only other question is, they have an onsite manager, how would we do?
Question. That's just, I mean, that's kind of my number one. That's the worst, my volunteer.
And then, then my other question is the hours. I thought we were going to go earlier than noon. Didn't we say something about that? We thought in the summertime it would be about 8:00 or 9:00 before noon.
I don't recall that, I do recall maybe the Thursday was Sunday out.
Did we have a time limit to the timing?
It's still, it's 9:00, it's 9:00 to 6:00.
You could make it 11:00.
Well, I mean, one of, I mean, if somebody sets up chairs, umbrellas, and stuff like that, you're at high noon, you're, you're late. So, or an operation like that, they would always need you early. Because if they go up there at 10:00.
Eight.
Eight, or about.
Yeah, now I talk to each other a lot.
You've got the umbrella, chair, and stuff like that.
Well, wouldn't they, wouldn't they normally probably just set some of them up down there? There's nothing that prevents them from doing that. And then.
Also, their kiosks, isn't it?
No, no, I'm saying.
You'd have to have reservations.
They, they, they could, they could have the chairs or something just set up out on the beach, okay? But somebody would have to go to the kiosk to rent those.
That would be up to the vendor, how they.
Well, I mean, that way, that way you don't have two people.
I know, but that's a, that's a trust thing.
No, that's right.
But, you know, by noon, people are bringing babies.
Yeah, I would see trust working with that scenario.
Well, I mean, that's, that's obvious.
Why is it going all over?
Don't buy them in.
From noon, why not make it 10:00? Whatever time you.
Well, whatever, whatever the noise ordinance is, travel, 10:00, 10:00, 10:00, 10:00 like that.
Is there a, is there a morning noise, noise award next time?
No.
If it is, the 10:00.
It's end to 6:00, I think, 10 to 7:00.
Dump trucks rolling down the street.
We have the noise ordinance, it's on the town code. And again, it's one of these, the starts by peace and quiet sort of, and it's not based on a despot or type of activity, so.
But they're putting in that, and those trucks are running down there, 7:00.
I think it, I think it should be 9:00. I mean, people are on the beach early, but it's hot.
Yeah, a lot of people are getting in by noon. Does anybody think that we've got the, you know, resources to staff for an onsite manager for all the additional hours?
Well, you've got, you've got.
It's five hours or eight hours.
The license, I don't know if they equate it to, if the license and fees and stuff, might be enough for a part-time person.
And Keith brought up a very good question last week, I haven't seen it here, about can one person buy all the sites, all the vendor sites? Did you think about that?
If, again, the way the museum does it is they have strict limitation on the type of goods that are provided. So the likelihood in all practicality, the likelihood of someone who secures a food vendorship, also securing beach chair vendorship and collectibles, it.
Maybe not just one, but maybe your three.
I guess it doesn't stop.
I guess the other question is, do we care?
A lot of stations comes in there, puts out their t-shirt vests, their umbrellas, and all that stuff, because they're like, I don't think they have food, don't have food and everything. No, they got anything but food. But they cover everything, so, but that would be one of those in the summer.
I guess the thing that I'm thinking about is we don't want a lot of our little shops struggling, you know, to sell those t-shirts, trinkets, or what have you.
I don't think they're going to do much out there, period. I think it's mostly going to be food and beach shirts and umbrellas, period. I don't see t-shirts.
Have awards and.
Yeah, I, I mean, it could be, but you know what, those people are naturally running, and one of those t-shirts in Florida. They might see something they like and buy them every once in a while, but they don't last long there. Refreshments, water, sodas, berries, hot dogs, screaming kids, new food, and shut up that one.
Unless you get some really wild and wack logo on the t-shirts they're bringing from climate, but, yeah, it's edge-based.
Can't control content.
Exactly.
It's not clan-wide, it's not.
So I, I make a motion that we change it from noon to nine. Anybody else? They can put out that, or maybe it's a.
Maybe shift the reference back from the top sign. It's one of the things, too. Because those people are not there at 6:00, they're later for the sunset.
Why, I mean, why?
That's a great question, sunset. Which of the nullies ordinance have noon? Is that the time from that start? It's the peace and quiet, too, that is, when it's about at 10:00 in the morning, it can be going about at night. And ordinance still speaks to, again, it was a problem with the food truck last summer. Didn't say it was a food truck, probably was a moss, was that an external generator? They keep generating complaints from the neighbors across the street.
They don't have any trucks, so.
Not this.
So, so they can't, like, be ringing bells for business and stuff like that? Crazy truck came through there a couple of times, plays that song.
Screen truck.
That song, like, once you hear it, it can get in and out of your head all day.
I consider a speaker an electronic amplification, or so, in a certain sense, a bell. I, I, again, I consider the speakers electronic amplification, that goes to a bell, it could be a manual. It's drafted, it's whatever needs to say as far as not, not representing, it always matters to its neighbors.
You could ask that, with the taxi guy, a terrible. That's not very good, though.
Well, cheesy, but.
Particularly, people don't arrive on the beach much before 10:00. I mean, not that they couldn't be setting up between 9:00 and 10:00. I think holidays, I've seen that beach filled up.
How much is back, do it, eat, 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 until the sun is. Beaches, especially sunset.
Well, then your client's out there too early on Tuesday, maybe he'll come back later on Wednesday, I think.
But I think 9:00 is very greasy at this time.
Are we talking about beach chairs, umbrellas, or everything? Quite honestly, most of the other seats has to figure out exactly. Perhaps they might only be there from 9:00 to 2:00. They come back, if we went for, if we did talk about the sunset, they come back from 7:00 to 9:00. Because right middle, it's that time or whatever. That's so, that would be, I think it was 4:00 or 6:00.
I know the, the food vendors, Karen Gayle, and, you know, the market thing up there, they, they go on demand to commit out of the vendors. So I think it's fair of us to, to.
Well, that's why I mentioned, at least to manage. So how much is the time given for business owners and stuff like that to be able to manage it? How much are we going to get from the meals tax out of the food vendors? That's going to be, I mean.
Not, certainly not enough hires and, and.
Do you know, though?
Could be spied. I mean, maybe not first year.
10% of their food, I believe, 5% of that. And adds up real fast. Shady does over 80, 90,000 dollars a year. Just the meals tax.
Really?
That we get, we, yeah. The actual 263 is 263? It's 263, we're sliding the deal, it's 200,000, the meals tax. So it generates a lot of money.
For 300, I'll do it.
So if you're a food vendor, sound, they're collecting, and they do it honestly, you know, it could potentially be easy to hire, you know, someone for the summer.
Yeah, it's temporary.
Yeah, it's temporary, I'm full-time now, incredibly temporary.
Keith's wife won't let him do it anywhere else, so I'll do it.
I can't see Keith down there.
His wife won't let him do it anywhere else.
He's putting on another box.
I see another box again, it'll be too soon.
So I guess, anyway, so we might look into someone overseeing it for part-time or something.
So what are they going to oversee, rather than?
For the current staff. Depending on what it does.
And job specifications for that individual would be?
We've got a couple, that's part of it, we'll get it come up. Because if we manage it, just like the market, they're going to have to make sure, I guess they'll be kind of the, I guess they would be behind kind of slightly, if we lose the license, and if we do it, where it's broken down into X amount of food vendors, X amount of retail, X amount of, I don't know.
That's more of a relationship type decision, right? Just make sure everybody's happy, beach goers, business people, those kind of things.
Yeah, it's not understanding, probably under the shoulder.
It could be a drive-by, just to see if they're still there.
That's right. It's likely to probably be some kind of interaction, maybe, you know, the mainstream folks to that individual.
Well, must that get started. That's a nice level.
Because that's something that's going to, would probably behoove us to be proactive.
Well, that could be, that could be folded into that part of the job.
Yeah, we also, like, my, Jim, we have a part-time recreational person who does events and sort of activities on the beach, and be very capable. I think they work from a Saturday mornings at least, you know, most days they're out there early in the morning, so they may be able to take some responsibility in talking about it.
Do we already have this individual? This individual already?
Already.
Structure.
Yeah, they're actually doing that thing, they're just making sure someone's there.
What was?
And the food vendor would have to have his license in the truck?
That's from the town, that's from food, food services. That's a whole lot, that's a lot of us.
Would that individual, what do you mean interrupt you? Would that individual then act as a liaison between a vendor with an issue and the town? Or so there's one person, and that person has a go-to person to get some answers? Did the individual that you happen to have in mind have the skill sets?
Is currently a school teacher, so.
Yeah, absolutely.
Beautiful. Organization building skills and.
Now that may change actually.
I don't know, though, if you look at the education of our children these days. Certainly make 50 cents out of your tax dollars. Well, you know, lawn chairs, I mean, chairs, the umbrellas, the stuff they do on the beach and all, uncomfortable with all of that. But quite frankly, when I hear food, drinks, hot dogs, all I see in my mind is litter. And, you know, napkins, plastic cups, containers, seagulls coming in seizing half-eaten hot dogs, or right out of your hand is what's happened to me at other beaches like that. And they don't care about children, who they have, who's in their way when they're after that food and all of that. But the litter particularly, not just getting into the water and affecting the sea life, but the appearance of the town, which I'd find anybody to tell me a more pristine beach than we have right now, or a more pristine town, because on Sunday mornings, my wife and I would go out and pick up litter in the town, walking around the corridor, and we could barely get one big leak bag full because it was so darn clean. Everybody takes it upon themselves to pick up trash, but there is a phenomenon.
They're doing it now with their coolers. People bring tons of coolers down. There's so much food down there on the beach during the day.
Yeah, but there's not a litter problem. I know there is. Yeah. And now vendors and.
You still have the same thing, you've got the trash cans that are on the beach.
The trash can perhaps, but.
Oh, they're there. Every entrance to you go on that beach, every entrance.
And they're going to be used.
Yeah. I mean, yes and no, it's just a kind of, the beach is so.
You can't stop this one to start.
I know, but they're, yeah, but that beach is so small, it's nothing like New Jersey, it's shallow, island-like, big. We have more people here that care about this place than to pick up.
Because the residents do not have visitors.
Yeah, because the residents are down there, the same number of visitors in there. I know, a lot of them say.
I used the.
I just don't see that being a big problem, because the beach is so small.
I really don't. So you think this is for our benefit as residents, not for the people coming from the downtown?
It's for, basically, it's for the tourists or the people, local people, don't bring something out, or bring here something, like sunset.
I used the beach quite a bit this summer with the company, and people cleaned up after themselves down there. It was great. It was such an easy beach to go to with little kids. But I didn't see people leaving trash or anything.
But they can, they can purchase this at one spot, and they're not prohibited from taking on the beach, right? They can carry it onto the beach or anything like that.
Just like everybody else.
And I, I mean, I would say that, you know, the town people have a sense of that, but.
Well, we're trying to make it more convenient for everybody, not just anything.
Just like anything else, like, when you're in the line waiting to get off the interstate, and you're going to take a leg to wrap, and you see this guy cutting into the shoulder, you say, that's, and you get angry with him, and then another guy does it. And then by the third or fourth, you're in there with that line. This phenomenon can cause trash to appear and never to change.
How bad is the park after our concerts? How bad is the park after the Fourth of July?
Very nice, it's, it's mostly our residents.
No, not in bigger vans, but in bigger vans, there's a lot of people from back there. Fourth of July, we might find, how bad was the town after Fourth of July? You have 8,000 people there. I don't see that being a problem. I really don't.
Well, you could also have to make sure that the vendors, if they, if they sell food, they have to have a trash receptacle there anyway. I mean, that's part, that's part of.
Yeah, well, the food service is going to make it, so.
Keep it from getting all over the town.
I don't see that. It doesn't happen during the Fourth of July, we might have that many people. I don't see that. I just don't.
Even, even with, yeah, now, but even with, you know, doubling the sizes as word gets out about all this and more and more visitors come.
That's what we're looking for. Why would we want that?
Well, like I said, they don't bring with them, speed or anything else, they don't bring with them the sense of commitment that the resident has. They're just here, they can buy what they want, and the town owes them to pick it up.
But that's the thing they're going to give the public beach, because the, the, the side effect of all these people coming to the town, not all of them, but a lot of them go to the restaurants after. So there's plenty more in the town. So it's, but.
Will they continue to do that? Do the restaurant people, are they supporting this? Do we know anything? Do we care?
No, because they're not, these are the people that don't want to go to the restaurants during the day, that they might go act.
On the weekends, it's impossible to prove to most of the restaurants in my country. I don't know. So they should welcome that. They say, great, that relieves. I think what we're trying to do here is that, for the average family, you're not going to take, you know, the wife and four kids and go up to Kelly's Pub for lunch because it's uncomfortable, simple. We're trying to look for an op, an option where people can stand with your, a hot dog or whatever. And in terms of attract, don't we have litter in all of these cities in this town?
You're at a problem.
Don't we? So, I mean.
And so, I mean.
They've got a food, they've got a food truck that the vented loft used to be.
But I mean, you get a couple.
They've got a chance to, it scans the beach. Everyone's around us, watch twice a day.
Well, that's what they, that's what they do in the summertime, they do, right? They check, they check the trash.
We never had trouble, even with tall ships, with all the people we had. People always used the trash can. Our biggest problem was getting the city to empty the trash can, so we could put in more trash. But I mean, we didn't, it wasn't a terrible cleanup after.
Right. I, I know what you're talking about. I mean, I have all these idiots who throw stuff out the car window, like, the world's not gonna change.
We have the cleanest beach and the cleanest town, probably in the United States. And, you know, that's, that's gonna be a limited amount of time.
Ride down Madison Avenue.
Which Madison Avenue?
Where I live. There's, I pick up trash every day.
That is also a limited problem.
I, 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 I'm not just telling what you're saying, your concerns, but I'll make a, a comment too. This is not business.
Not yet. But you're starting to go out and style all the vendors and things.
I'll, I'll make a better comment. This is, this is not Big Creek.
Big Creek is Kate Charles. Get over here. I get so pissed off.
The Bay Creek East West, Big Creek is all Kate Charles.
A lot of people from Bay Creek come in town to go to the beach.
I know a lot of people for their coming to this town don't go to Big Creek.
It's a private community.
Let's get started on that.
It's a private community, but it's in the town incorporating the rivers. It's a private.
I understand that perfectly well, in Big Creek.
I know, but I hate when people say, and separate the two. Get over one. Oh, I'm not getting over it. I get, there's so much crap written out of it, it drives me insane. This is one town, they all pay tax revenue.
Any other, any other important comments on this, on this subject?
No, I mean, I know this is not beyond end, but it's just that in the process of many opportunities for people to express concern.
Um, Chairman Porter's words. Um, the attendance rate, um, what was, what came up by way of discussion, and it, and it does touch a, a number of issues that we brought up in the discussion to this point. If there's a, a participation rate or an attendance rate on a weekly event, that's easier to enforce. Uh, the policy improvement says if you miss three market days, you lose your, your station. May first is, you expect to see visitors coming May first. Most people will tell you summer starts Memorial Day weekend. So maybe that May first, Memorial Day weekend can be a grace period for folks who acquire their approval, but not necessarily have the resources to be there every day, knowing that there might be a dozen people on the beach in the first weekend May, but there'll be hundreds on the beach on Memorial Day of every day. It, it's kind of, it's kind of a big part of the year, but at the same point of time, the program has to start at some point.
Especially if there's employees involved with the parents.
That's what I think.
Yeah, that sounds reasonable.
That's what I'm thinking about the brick and mortar places that would be opening up, they're like, sort of auxiliary cart, off-site. This way, somebody doesn't have to wait two hours for their meal at the brick and mortar place. They can come and get a snack during the day. From a business, operating brick and mortar business in town, they might have this table up before the people, who's a scan or four. They're already part menu and there's no people.
It's not, it's not, it's not gonna be easy for the food vendors, because they still have to have the free bake thing, so they have the three buckets to clean. It's not gonna be easy for them.
And they're not, yeah, they have a generator.
It's not gonna be easy. I mean, if you have a nice print card to sell, and some of these get better after just eight hours, that'll work. But, you know, it's so close at a hot dog stand, you're really not looking at tremendous amount of food vendors that are gonna take away from the brick and mortar. It's more gonna be, most likely, something that's quick, packaged thoroughly, something that's gonna be cold, I mean, transit cooler. Stuff like that. So I don't see big full-service meals unless they're, they're gonna be prepackaged in the, the, the commercial kitchen. They just can't go home and make a sandwich and throw it in the Ziploc bag, you know?
I mean, there's a, it happens to include by the way of health.
Right. Unless it's a professional kitchen and professionally, they can't do it. So the only thing you'll see out there, most likely, is gonna be some that's got a gas, LP, something, keep something that's a hundred and sixty degrees for hot dogs or whatever, I think it's a hundred and sixty. But then they have to have the water out there to clean the utensils. And they can touch that anytime. If it's contaminated, they can show that.
Right.
So, I mean, the only one we've ever seen do that is Sean Ewers, yeah. Son of a hot dog, yeah, getting ready soda. But he had all that stuff out there with.
Like, more proof, thank you?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Says it made a noise.
Right.
So really, what we have in the various guy that really limits what you can do. I mean, you're not gonna see the taco stand out there, unless they, you know, instead of putting hot dogs, you know, instead of chili, taco meat. Yeah, that could be done. So it's really not gonna be, it's maybe everybody next to it. It's just something that helps out. You know, thirst is a big thing there. It's around that type of area.
So what do we have to do to change the tone? We have a motion.
Motion, that's consecutive.
It's not been seconded, but we have a motion, a law decision.
That's right.
Well, the key is, I mean, you can start it earlier than what should be ended. I mean, sunsets are.
I think. I don't think vendors will be there after six in the morning.
Be surprised, they'll go away and come back. So the time, the difference, the difference between sunset and beach, you've seen the Milwaukee.
Yeah, you're right. They're absolutely right. It's packed.
Maybe it's an opportunity. Do we limit it to just during the day, or do we do it the whole standout? Not necessarily have to be released later at night, it's just that it's pretty much set for the daytime.
You can just say nine.
Why limit it to that for the vendors if they see an opportunity at night? Because you're gonna police, they'll see you during the day. I don't think the night is quicker, but why limit it to those guys? I mean, the opportunities there at sunset are just as great as during the day. By paying.
You want, you want nine to sunset?
Well, sunset is nine o'clock, so quarter to nine.
Well, the fluctuation.
Yeah.
It's about eight fifty today, so. You can confuse heavy cloud cover for sunset, too.
By time, you know.
You have heavy cloud cover.
It's hard to leave.
Yes, yes, yes.
Now, is there also some information, if we, you know, try to make our best estimates, what would be best, like, for next summer? To have a season in which, at the end of it, which we could say, okay, now, what, what do we, what do we wanna go for on, on a final basis? Or does it have to be forever, right now, you know, in this period of time, when we make all these changes?
Maybe scaling it back to start, see how it works out?
I don't know about scaling, but.
He's looking for trial and error.
Try it what you want. But by the end of the summer, then, at this time next year, we say, okay, what, what worked, what didn't, what do we wanna?
And that should come from anybody having to deal with the public and the town, whatever, whatever issues came up. We should be able to get that feedback and decide, how do we need to tweak the?
We should get feedback from the minister.
Absolutely, yes, 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 yes.
But the, the, the thing I think about the police department, having the person out of the beach from the town, is see who's there, who showed, who doesn't show, because if we're only limited to X amount of people, and someone really wants to do it, but this guy's not showing up, you know? There are two days of six, or the five, whatever. That basically is tricky. So then this other guy, we're, we're, he's missing the opportunity, maybe it's a little bit, that's what the different, it's gonna suck. So it's kind of like, we still have to police it in a way to make sure it's being used. Because you're gonna have people bring out there and say, this spot has been vacant for five days, even comes into the weekend, what about the other five days gonna happen? Know what I mean? That's what we're probably gonna run into.
But I thought, I thought we were creating on that.
That's probably the biggest problem.
But we, we're going, they're gonna have to commit.
Correct. It's, it's all about the, depending.
Sure.
But what I'm getting at is, if you got one.
Good point. Do we want, do we wanna give them freebies for foul weather?
Yeah, they're not.
Well, that, 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 we should write that in the, in the, in the.
Yeah, if you're committed, know that they're foul weather.
Right.
Expect to view it, yeah.
Right.
There could be stuff that comes up, and that will enlarge, there's all sorts of things. But for the guy who comes in there two days a week for four straight weeks, he's figuring out what his business happens. So another guy could have some total different work that on schedule. I mean, something you have to look at, take into consideration. I would say they could, you know, just see what happens in the following year, what, what we observe, what we don't observe.
Okay, that, that basic question, does the business that has the first right to that spot have the license to, to sublease your spot to somebody else?
That's not working.
True, absolutely right. So how are you gonna manage that? Is it, is it gonna work?
If he foregoes the license, you resell the license.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would say no sublease. Because he's, could be making money.
Yep, exactly.
That's not for me.
Yep.
That's not for us.
You know, remember, we talked about this.
Releasing. I guess you're technically saying releasing of the spot is, or the.
That's what they have, I don't think.
For the, uh, the business license.
Farmers market.
I'm not charging the first.
Because if you don't have that, of their topics, because my wife volunteers up there, it's a chaos.
Yeah, we could have a pilot program, right, if we wanted this next season.
Because we're not doing this, uh, we're not doing this, uh, you know, paid for, doing this business license. The, the, the law's free. So if someone turns on a sublease, sublease for free, that's a business license. That's a big enough.
Yep.
I would just write that in, and it's like, you, you believe.
Yep, exactly.
So that's gonna make the determination on what type of business is going in there. So I can see where self, where, where drinks are really big, okay? So if you have one person who just sells drinks, is that, what about other people that sell food? They're gonna sell drinks too. And I, and I can see that, but, I mean, you can't have, you can't have just one person that sells drinks, and you have somebody else comes in there and wants to sell drinks.
You get that, but we do it from a first, like, sell water.
I didn't say just water.
Or.
Or, you know, iced tea, sodas. I mean.
Well, you know, I guess, just like the Fourth of July, you could go to a food vendor, that's just a secondary item. It's not one of the first.
I understand that, but I'm just saying, if there's somebody down there thinks that he, that's what he wants to do, and he can get a lot of sales, then, you know, is he gonna be the only one that's gonna do that?
Yeah, but that could be a good consumer business.
Because the hot dog vendor is gonna sell cokes.
Well, I understand.
I mean.
Well, if he sells it too cheap, he won't be there too long, because he won't make enough money to do this. So there's a fine line between the charge, you know, he could be the low guy, but, I'd give my drink to this guy, because he's a little cheaper, he might get that.
Well, who's gonna be the arbiter of what type of business is going in? That could be the.
That's what we got down there.
You guys.
That's the, you gotta figure out what type of vendors, what happened. And that's part of the discussion.
Yeah, what was pointed out from the, um, from the farmer's market, and it's their experience, there's never been anybody else's experience. It's been their experience, um, that what's sold has to be monitored, so that what's, someone proposes to sell and is approved to sell, like, week before, doesn't become something else. Specifically, to the exact word, it was, you can't let it become a flea market. And, um, the onsite manager has to be cognizant of that. Uh, so.
But that could be a list of spot, you know, and that, you know, basically the, the area, depending on how, how big this area is, because I don't even get this.
Well, the point is gonna depend on the size of the vending area.
Correct, because a hundred, ten to ten, we're only gonna fit X amount down there.
Right.
Was it number twelve? Was it number twelve from last month?
I don't think, because we don't, we had to be, kind of, we had to figure out that area, what should go there, basically.
They also got a lot of consumables onsite and the farmer's market, where if you do have a picnic area already, the picnic area serves a, a social benefit, it's a social good. So anything that eats into the picnic area space for vending, I, I think this is definitely a balance law of, of interest. Do you need more vending space, do you need more picnic space? For people who don't wanna spend a dime, you know, they'll bring their own. Uh, that's why, and, and all the conversation with the, with the, with the farmer's market, which I learned a lot. I, at the end of that conversation, I came away thinking this is more like a food court at the mall than it is the farmer's market.
Right.
Eventually. I, I think that the experience is gonna be more along the lines of, I buy something over there, I come and sit over here, and that's not what goes on at the farmer's market.
I would, I would almost propose to be the north of the, um, the fishing pier at Orbach, and we've got a whole area over there for picnic area. Pajamas, there's good tennis, and the ones, I wouldn't put it in that area.
I wouldn't either.
I'm talking about from the Orbach area, or from where they tap to do on the beach, up to the gazebo, is what we've been talking about.
Right.
So that's not that much space, because if you only limit them to the front side of the access to side of all, and not back in the business, you're only gonna get probably ten at the most, because it's, it's five hundred fifty feet, ten fifteen at the most, or it's about a hundred feet, so it's ten, it's ten vendors.
That's for food, right? The beach chair, you think it can be on the beach.
Yeah, whatever you decide. The kiosk is gonna be there, or for them to check out the chair. It's not, there's stories pretend to be able to do in the time that we're talking about.
But the kiosk, right, right, right there, the same place with the business.
Right, so it's not gonna be that handy.
Okay.
So if we limit it to this half, half food and half, uh, whatever.
Rales.
Rales, give fifty fifty, just start out, see who goes, do you need more food? And it's, it's working more food, the vendors and rales are not gonna be doing that well, then you see, you see where it's going. Or could be vice versa, honestly. Because you could have a chair and a relish, pass one, kiteboard, wakeboards, doubt they would run a skin board, someone wants to break it that way. Um, I definitely, that's, that's a good idea. Uh, but I definitely do a kiteboard, but they'll probably have awards or boogie boards or something like that, something that's in the war.
So who, who do you see making these calls midstream, uh, how we allocate the spaces? We're not gonna get together all that, all that quickly.
No, you gotta do it seasonally, see how it runs out for the season. I'm, I don't think you can turn around this.
I think so, yeah.
You still have enough time.
Right, right.
But it would be a, you know, you play it by, you see what happens for the first year.
So we, we, we need to make sure that, one of the things we're doing as we go through this first season, is we're taking, uh, low-impact measurements, kind of, a lot of time measuring it. Keeping track of other issues come up, and.
See what the, see what the trust and area of interest.
Exactly, right, 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 right.
Well, we're giving ten by ten spots. Yeah, but also gotta make sure these guys that are running the, the, anything that's movable, make sure they have the freaking insurance. Because those guys are gonna be moved out of for someone, they do rent a skin board.
So you're so much, who's gonna do that, who's gonna, who's gonna?
That'd be part of the license.
Right.
And if you're looking. That's part of the license, is getting a town license.
So look what the farmer's. How long is this license good for?
Year.
One year?
Over the season?
I think the license presents some unique features that a regular business license doesn't present. Uh, for instance, some of these folks who get a license in a spot will come to the conclusion by early June that this isn't working out for them. Uh, and will need to be able to have a, a way to bank out and recoup their contribution to the business license. Uh, so a prorated situation is probably gonna be advisable, and again, part of that theory, will learn a lot in a year.
Mm-hmm. Plus, if you had a waiting list for the license, first, we'd have to fill it.
Mm-hmm, exactly.
You mentioned, uh, existing restaurants having settled up. Is that something that was just surmised, or is that something that's been discussed already?
Uh, the, none of the, I take that back, only one of the brick and mortar establishments has ever come to my office anyway. none of the, I take that back, only one of the brick and mortar establishments has ever come to my office anyway about, what do I need to do to get a food jar open? Only one, they might have not done it either. But.
Because too many rules and regulations?
I think that, and I also think that, that the, the, the commitment of time doesn't, if you run the numbers, it's better to have the brick and mortar place stay out instead of a truck on the side, by the, by the side of a road open for people to come by.
I was positive that nothing was wrong at the same time.
Well, I, I guess, that in particular.
Well, we're allowed to lose those. Make sure to go out there and get a, uh, a hot dog cart and do tacos.
See, I get pizza's built for it, I mean.
Yeah, he can do that. If he gets that idea, but he still has to go out and test it, and a cart that keeps that particular product up to what temperature it is. He can't use a generator, and that's gonna be tough.
Well, I don't know, I, after last month's meeting, went back and looked at this, I think, there are some generators out there that, the new product, that are really high tech, that are that make very little oncoming noise. Pretty, pretty amazing thing, so I don't think anybody's that high tech, because they're very expensive.
They're, they're a little, and they're ten kilo a watt.
But I think when we're looking at the bigger picture, if somebody has some money and wants to make a run of this thing, I think it's really very, very plausible that all ten go to one person.
I don't see that. There's no one.
I see what you're saying. I see what you're saying. I'm a meat-bending kind of a guy, right?
I know, but there's no one sure that has the license, you know, the business that covers food, rental, they don't cover it all.
When the working captain.
I don't see it.
Are we, does the town plan on marketing this opportunity, or how does, how do we plan on once this gets up?
It's basically published, published like any other taco.
I don't think we can eat it, there, there's a lot of ifs, because it depends on if we do, uh, you know, with the, uh.
It depends six weeks just to hear.
Yeah. If we're doing Main Street, if that comes into play, it could be one, two, now, it, it depends, there's a lot of ifs right now.
I think it's a wonderful idea, I think it's.
I just don't see huge one business.
I think that's a.
I don't see one business. It's one business.
Maybe not in twenty sixteen.
No, but let's say I have ten separate business licenses, and I have one business license, one spot.
I agree with that a bit harder, I mean, that's.
One company, one spot.
I agree with that as well. Because there's commitment to LLCs and those kind of things that take a few bucks. How much is a business license?
I don't know. It's basically like.
Right, so I looked, I looked, yeah, I looked over here, for beer only, is it twenty-five dollars annually?
New C's. Yeah, that's a totally different license. Beer license, you can't do it anyway, it's probably, you can't do it down there. Um, but, restaurants have a beer license they pay, based on a number, depends on if you do the beer, liquor, and wine. Beer category. Then they pay the ABC, so pay town liquor license, they pay ABC liquor license. Then we have a business license for the business based on retail. Restaurants retail, all the shops downtown we pay. Those would be retail.
So that's at twenty to thirty cents per hundred.
Uh, two point six three hundred dollars.
So we're gonna ask these carts to report sales?
They have to. They have to, just like every other business does in town. They're supposed to report to the state too.
Well, that's, that's different than to the town, I mean, reporting sales for the cost of the business license.
If you select, you have, no, it's not, if you collect, if you collect.
Sales tax, or sales in any of those.
I know, but if you report, if you apply sales tax to the state, you pay, it tells you how much gross you made, what was your net based on?
That state, like, controls the tax.
It doesn't matter, because they have to go to the state and get that information.
Or then they could go to the state and give that information, but I don't, I, and I'm not arguing, because I don't really care, but I just don't think that it's plausible to ask a cart vendor who probably, well, I shouldn't say this, but may not be that, um,
Savvy?
Savvy might be a good word, to even understand reporting sales.
Well, when you go to a business license, spell out, if that.
I would find that really amazing, and all of the businesses that we have opened, and in all the leases that I've negotiated, nobody, we, we negotiate out reporting sales, because we don't want them to know. The state and the, and federal government, that's the kind of story. But paying business license on, uh, the cost of business license, on the cost of sales, that's, that's very different, it just caught me off guard, that's all I'm saying.
Everybody in the town knows, I'm not for that. I'm not a big fan.
I, I.
Well, what you have to do is, 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 is check through the money cash you start the gateway, check out the end of the day, the difference is what you report. I mean, this is, it's not marketing, go ahead.
Right now, um, we charge a P E D O S license, which is fifty dollars a year.
Okay.
Period, for food carts and open trucks.
Okay.
And if it's a, uh, existing business that has a license, they pay twenty cents per hundred.
And no deals fast.
Yeah, and, um, it covers somebody there, but if it's somebody coming in, that does not already have a business in town, and they wanna have a hot dog cart, they pay fifty dollars.
Right.
P E D O S license.
Flag fee, that's it?
Yeah.
That sounds fun.
That's, that's how, that's how it is, no.
I think.
How do they get away with that, the state, they have to report to the state? That's really, that's unfair to the brick and mortar.
I don't care. Well, they gotta report to the state, they gotta report to the federal government.
Yeah, but we're, that is. We're expecting, I know, this is why, it's all about, it's, this is why you're creating that the business license for the restaurants. They're paying three or four thousand dollars a year for a business license based on those same. It's nuts, and then you make a grand agreement, ten there, a fifty dollar fee, and I have to pay it, that's kind of slap the face of the house. And those are the ones that bring those, the huge amounts of revenue.
What do we do when we have, it all ships, all the vendors we had in for that?
Fifty, I think they pay fifty bucks.
That came under the event, that came under the event.
They paid fifty bucks, I think, per spot, at least I did the first.
They paid for their tent site.
Yes.
They didn't have to report anything.
Some make where there's tents, I think, you know.
Eight way.
Yeah, they were ten by ten.
Ten by ten, I had an eight way. First grid, it is.
And the only ones that had to make sure they had a license was the beer truck. And that was.
That's illegal.
That's a legal thing, nothing else. I mean, they had to have, if they were selling food, they had, I mean, I did all the applications for them, for the permits from the Board of Health, and they came and inspected them, but other than that, there was nothing.
We're not gonna have conventional food trucks down there, correct?
No, but I agree with you on that.
Well, it did.
Is that right, Matt?
Not, not in this area. They, I mean, it's obviously a different story, but not in this area.
Okay. I just, another thought here, is there any place at all in our draft comprehensive plan that makes reference to this, that we can say we're, we're filling a box or accomplishing something by doing it, or?
Not with the, not within the open space district. Uh, it's, it's all broadly along the lines of, uh, we talk a lot in there about the, uh. Yeah, event, more event oriented, uh, so it's more of a, uh, time place specific, it's just more than, than you can talk on the lines of talk, it's just time place specific, and it gets over with, uh, and then you can launch something else, as opposed to.
I mean, should I really add a word to, I mean, that hasn't been approved yet, it just, it would show that, that there's some desire to have this in our plan? Well, we do have. Just keep up out of nowhere. We do have John Dean coming up, but this is also coming around to the fact that you finished it.
Besides, that would have started a few years.
Only a year.
We're here, start it up to.
You're starting to sign again?
No, we don't, it doesn't start to be signed, it's, according to John Lee Townley.
Clock starts ticking.
Now, it's, it's starting, when we start, right? Well, let's answer that question. The five years starts by signing.
Right, five year review.
Okay, so we've got five more years, if and when we ever get that thing signed.
Yes.
Yes. Any other discussion on this, on this project? Where, where do we want to go from here, guys?
What's our next step?
Are we at noon to sunset? I'm sorry, are we at nine to sunset?
We have motion on the table, no second, no second.
Well, the letter should be amended to nine to sunset.
And I second that.
On the first?
Six o'clock. Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Well, which is, like I said, year two, we'll go back and readdress it.
Yeah.
And, I mean, we still got a lot of the.
Year two, you can trust the policies.
I agree. Yeah, because there's some stuff that might not work, some stuff might happen, but might say, it might be, you know, this doesn't work at all.
Right, I think next year input from vendors will be a huge, huge deal. Because they're, they're gonna go where they need to be profitable, but at the end of the day, if they're not making money, they're not gonna be here.
And things we wanna add, you know? Do we owe you anything last week?
No.
Okay.
New business. Comments from September, for September twenty-first, two thousand sixteen meeting with North Amity County Planning Commission?
Oh, time.
Uh, the letter from Chairwoman Chapman from North Amity County Planning Commission, it speaks for itself. Um, this was a letter that went to Mayor Prodo, Vice Mayor Bannon, uh, for a meeting on the twenty-first of September, uh, where the town representative, uh, presumptively, at this point, that means Mayor Prodo will have, uh, a few minutes to address, that's basically five minutes, to address, uh, the six questions or statements that have been proposed. So.
So they have a question.
Right, uh, who knows what they'll do, uh, but this is relevant to the county's effort to revise their comprehensive plan, uh, after having passed their zoning ordinance. So, uh, which, which is open for the planning school, anyway, you know.
Because there's zoning, just a question of two thousand nine, it's a lot of occasions.
Correct, and at least, there's, there's at least one question again that asks about uses within the town edge district, uh, which I know this board.
Resents something?
Work extensively on, uh, so, and, and was seen.
Yeah, we did sense something.
So, but I guess it's nice for the ask again, after all these things.
If you go to, it's pretty fine, twice a minute, it never reached actually town, ever.
Now, if you go away, the tax B is the county's current, not group, not their grant provider, but their current comprehensive plan, our current comprehensive plan, the one in the county addressing the town, town lane uses, and the town cage. So that's, um, not the, uh, twenty thirteen revisions from the county, those are the two thousand and nine actual comprehensive plan of the county, relative again to the town edge district.
So you remember when we went through this whole thing, we requested to have a meeting with that? And when we got up there, they had no idea what was going on.
Right, right.
They're like deer in a headlights, like, what are you gonna do that? They don't know anything about that. I mean, that's how bad it was.
Well, that was a bit small there.
Yeah, or it should be, they had to work, you know, because of.
Yep, right, so.
They were argumented, or maybe they did this.
No, they were like, well, they were very positive about the.
Yeah.
We still have.
I had a good conversation with both of us.
Yeah.
They made a, yeah. We don't have.
Yeah.
They were, seem to be on our side today.
But don't we have a big section in the comprehensive plan about this?
We have, we have something.
A few paragraphs. The town, the town has addressed the town edge in a fair way. Um, the confusion or the lack of clarity at this point is at the county level. So, uh, they're, they're soliciting input about what the county should be saying about the town edge district.
Yeah. Just dust off the thing they sent me for.
Or, Coach, Coach Mayor Prodo, I think he sent me for.
Yeah. He's, he's.
Oh, he's very concerned about the line for, 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 and get that corner in between, um,
Food Bay?
No, the boat yard and the wire. That's all C one now. So you can throw up anything you want, like they're coming right up and down.
Oh, the corner?
Mm-hmm.
You get the corner?
So, and then.
Just trying to, right, right, right.
Yeah, coming down, you've got, uh, a few other commercial spots, and there's commercial spots on Carson Circle. Yeah, it's really weird, so that's town edge, and that basically affects every other.
Did you guys all see the, um, tree dead on Carson Circle? Or mine? Yeah. If you go from full Cape Charles Road, Carson Circle, out to thirteen, on the left-hand side, within the first quarter mile, the whole tree top got toppled.
This roof. Got a Hess, missing his roof.
Charlie, Charlie, you got a corner, short man?
Call him. Kill him.
There, Charlie, let us show back.
Oh, you know, one thing we need to be careful of is if we, um, endorse agriculture. There's a lot of that is, is edge company, you know, where at town. I read that up in Salisbury, these, uh, chicken farmers consider that agriculture. That they consider it farming.
Do you think the chicken thing is dead?
Yeah, I hope so, but I'm, I'm just pointing out, agriculture may be a broader term than what we think is.
I'm pretty sure there's a huge portion of the county that does not, I just want, I think it's one of the things they maintain in two thousand.
I've been to many, many meetings.
Just saying, I think it's one of the big things that they've had out of the whole thing, is the check, two thousand nine, that was, that was.
But they're doing it.
One act.
And they're calling it farming. Just FYI.
Is it marketable?
Well, you need to see these lawyers. That's what is.
We got, when we got a one, over a billion dollar industry in the county.
Huh?
Over a billion dollar industry in the county.
For checks.
Yeah, and where does that three dollars go? China. We get the shit, and they get the meat. Times Square, thank you. All that.
Any other comments on the business? We gonna be announced? Sorry?
So I think it's just a good sign, the check is fine.
Oh, absolutely, I, I'm totally disagreeing with that all.
To do this, go down here, and that, the town. See.
Uh, no, of course, yes, you do, mayor has to do it.
He's the one who's talking to it. But don't they want us to recommend something? Something he's gonna use to, okay.
Is there gonna be any other questions we all?
Where we need to make recommendations?
I agree with you.
Are we all gonna go to a meeting on twenty first?
No.
No.
Yeah, it's, I would.
I think you want to, but the mayor's.
I would suggest that we, Mayor Prodo should be, who wants to win it. And then he can make a decision by himself as to what he wants, what he feels is important. This is not for anyone, he knows how to do it.
Anyway, you said, we're gonna be a company, we're gonna set that aside.
Uh, is that in? First, in the town.
Um, it's the H T B district, I don't know if it's on our website or not, but it's.
When did we say that?
It's been a while, we sent it, we sent it last January.
January fifteenth.
January fifteenth, and, as the second time.
Right, they should have also sent it.
Yeah.
Well, is it that same, do you remember if it was in the December something? Can't remember.
I, I have the language, it's, it's attached to the resolution that the county, the council did, I can send it to you.
That has to be attached in the, for the March first, um, planning commission meeting on the zoning, uh, well, we gotta look at the town, for the, the county, the purpose of the county zoning ordinance. Uh, so, uh, I'm only sure that's what that resolution is, and again, it's also a resolution that, not just encourage the county to, the county administration to actually involve the town's planning commission in issues that are related to planning the county.
Yeah.
If I'm not mistaken, with two resolutions.
We did two, yes.
Uh, that, and this was.
The town council did two resolutions.
That was with Rob.
Yeah.
Yeah, right, it was like a Rob.
Yeah.
That was fourteen.
May fourth.
Signed first? Yeah, I think it was fourteen, because, I mean, that's what maybe you're not gonna forget, like, really? I don't know anything about that. It was, it was amazing, they had no idea what was going on. So you realize you're pushing on this business up to thirteen? Really? And that was pretty bad. And still, if you go on, I think if you search for it online, it pops out there, the, uh, counting minutes for planning.
The county?
Yeah, it's in the county, that's such a relevant day. But that was before, that was before we set up the recommendation for the town edge.
That's where we first came up with.
No, we, we did it twice, we done it twice.
Oh, this is two thousand fourteen, this is back in the door, it was there. And Rob, Rob was their planning director.
Planner.
Planner. He was, he was there.
Any other comments before we move on to announcements?
The 1st of September, uh, what do we plan to talk to the mayor, Kirchner on this, if it's in two weeks?
Oh, I, okay. Maybe I just made a grand assumption and didn't, didn't take it through. My recommendation was to give him what we already written. Let him read it and then decide for himself what he wants to talk about, because that's what's going to play.
Well, Gibson, Gibson definitely a good guy, what we were thinking.
Yeah, exactly.
I don't think much has changed, quite honestly.
No. Well.
We, we had.
The mix of the board of supervisors has changed, because that's.
That's what the art, art, art came to that.
Yeah.
I don't think there's much change.
We had in there what we wanted, what we said was for commercial and everything.
Right, right.
It's pretty complete.
It should be, it should be, maybe there was some talking points, but nothing else. For ideas they already had in mind, that's hopefully.
Yeah, perhaps the answer to question number one is already in, was already within the town's comprehensive plan, where we talked about the town edge district.
Yeah.
So, you know, what's the vision of the town, of the town age zone, leave the town, town comprehensive plan?
And George Brown, I'd agree with us because we were in the commercial part, but then he doesn't want to have, he wants to have control over what's put there, what's out, how the. But before we do, but if they give us the input and saying, what kind of, I don't know if you're gonna have any legal recourse controlling that since it's a commercial in the district.
Sure.
He's looking for input, looking for some input. It's just one of those things that you get sued and taken to court and judge says, all right, you can do it. Can't stop.
Is there any, is there any, uh, opinion on number six, uh, this stuff about, um, who should be doing economic development?
When, but that helped, but what Andy was saying, that, uh, bring like someone has a high rate issue to do whatever they want. I thought this was about rezoning. I thought we were gonna get rezoning for that district. I mean, if we don't get rezoning.
It's a problem of zoning ordinance before a comp.
That's all the problem to that.
Yeah, well, we're sprinting, I sprint now, we was, if they have heart of concern.
No, I hope they would do it as a, uh, uh, special use for a period. Oh, yeah. I thought we, I thought we could say what, what does it.
I thought in our comp plan, we talked about economic development.
We sure do.
That's right, so, it's still, still valid.
Yeah.
So, I, I just tell them that. That's what he's asking for.
It's a number of sections. They were.
No.
Number of sections in our, our.
Say it again.
About the.
The economic development. We talked about it in our comp plan. We, we had made mention to the town that the town should have, should look at having an economic development person.
Well, that's where something else might come in, is all it is.
Well, you know.
Main Street would be part of that economic development.
Well.
You go to that. There, I mean, there's a whole. This, we, I mean, it's kind of funny, but I could write another cuss with two things that could, it could go either direction. So if we had a main street program, email development could come through that, that could prove that the town is fully, so the town's directing it, really.
Well, that's what we kind of mentioned.
Right.
And.
So, we basically, but we can't really say main street because we haven't really started. Maybe I'll.
Could be, say, we can say that the town is looking at that and that's, you know, and that's.
I torsionized it too, because.
Yeah.
Such as.
Right. Now, he's very, he's, he's, yeah, he's well versed on.
We're talking about that Thursday.
So why don't we give them this feedback number six? Because it used to be the county did all this by themselves.
Yeah, but they did it to us.
I don't know.
But, I mean, if we're doing it, hopefully they're to be a partnership, at least working with the town, the county. Because I don't know if the county's gonna bring that position back.
No kidding?
Not if the county's wrong.
Yeah, I know, I know.
So, they're basically looking for us to ask, do they need, what sounds like.
Well, they're saying that they wanna have a combined.
Right.
One for both counties.
Yeah.
That's what it says. They want it there regionally.
Well.
Well, yeah, that's what they're talking about. It may not wanna do it, but there's nothing so big.
We don't wanna do anything now.
No.
I don't know chickens or anything else can stand both counties.
Do your towns support this recommendation? As so would you cooperate with the Akamak-North Hampton Joint Planning District?
Well, they have a planning commission, they both have the Akamak planning.
Yeah. Well, I can deal with this.
Mike.
I don't think it's gonna, it's quite often two counties sort of quite opposite, I don't have a little 14. Who, you know. Who would they, who would they favor? Akamak County, because it's bigger? Or Fun County, or Fun? Yeah, exactly. I don't know if that's a wise, I think it should be done regionally, I mean, uh, in our own region. And what you're doing, you see it working better with doing it also, developing counties as a region?
I think the town comprehensive plan speaks to the economic development of the town pretty clearly. And that's just really so up in it. If the county's looking for that kind of input, again, I would advise the county planning commission to leave the town's comprehensive plan.
No.
But you don't know what that position at the county level is gonna be stamped again.
Yeah.
And.
It doesn't work like it.
I don't think so.
And then, and I don't know if there's anything anytime soon to hire a town person, but again, main street not to stand, that's gonna be so. So now, plus economic development means business retention as well as it means, you know, uh, quality incentive programs, tourism zone, if it gets, if it gets out of the, 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 um, development is harder. All of those things, for, for Cape Charles, all of that is economic development. It's not just what at the county level you would do is try to retract on what industry and say, okay, look, now we've got an industrial park, or shelter open, for jobs, for, at the county level, we've got an economic development. That's not Cape Charles.
Yeah, but I'm pretty sure that, what is it? Is it Akamak-North Hampton County Planning Commission or Planning District?
District Commission, Planning. Mantis.
Yeah.
That's amazing.
Running district commission.
It's amazing.
What exactly do they?
They hire out their staff, they're all the time through comprehensive plans.
I mean, I'm, I'm telling you. So that's how I say it, though.
So what are we, are we gonna recommend?
I think very correct, just having our complaints and see what we're doing.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think so too.
I think so too.
I don't think the Akamak County intended county, I just think we're gonna do, you know, and I figure something down.
I think, uh.
We're not the only step show.
I don't think we want to push the R that county does.
Well, they're, they're completely pro growth out there, like crazy pro growth. And anybody that comes down here, it's like, they don't come down here because it's like pulling teeth to get anything done. And zoning ability. I won't do that right now. It is a fantasy, but, I mean, at least we're checking their Ps and Qs to make sure that it's done right and it's not over.
I don't see this stuff from that. It says the towns will continue to be the most appropriate location for new residential, non-residential development.
It's the first one that came up, Matt.
So, it looks like, I mean, they're asking for our.
Well, we're not denying the input.
Right.
We'll get the most current information we got.
No, because X1's got something. I'm, I'm sure X1's very similar to ours.
Right, because they're doing lots of sues.
So. They're also wanting to bring a lot of business down downtown.
Right, but that's what this letter, this is from their planning commission, looks like that's what they, they agree with too. They seem to agree with a lot of stuff we had in there. Comp.
We're still, I'm not keen on that, that joint plan.
We already have a hard enough time to deal with Akamak County or with North Hampton County for that matter, so, yeah. Any larger organization, we're asking for trouble.
That's what this is, they're asking, right?
Yes.
Okay. For a change.
Since we have no announcements, do I have a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion.
We can have it right now. Oh, okay.
Do I have a second?
All second.
All in favor? On both?